Okay, good evening. It's 5:30 and we'll go ahead and call the San Bruno City Council's special meeting of August 24th, 2021 to order. And if the city clerk, if you could be so kind as to take role.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Salazar? I'm sorry, Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Old habits. Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Now we'll move on to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. We do have a study session this evening on strategic initiative and a discussion of potential downtown ad hoc committee. If it's not related to that and you wish to speak, this would be the time to please raise your hand and we will go ahead and call on you. Seeing no hands, we'll go ahead and move on to item four, which is a study session. Strategic initiative update and discussion of potential downtown ad hoc committee. First, we'll go ahead and start off with the strategic initiative update and we'll turn that over to the city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the city council and members just watching at home. Javon Grogan, city manager. I'm here to kick off our presentation of the strategic initiative updates. I'll begin from here, then I'll sit back down as we go through details and answer questions. Just a quick overview, the objective is to provide the city council with an update on funded and unfunded strategic initiatives. This is really high level update. These new initiatives were adopted for the fiscal year beginning July 1. And we did commit to give quarterly updates, but what I wanted to do is early on, because not everything was able to be funded in the budget, come back to the city council and give you a very brief high level update and let you know what we're working on. In addition, as the mayor mentioned, Councilmember Medina requested and the city council supported a discussion with regard to the establishment of a potential downtown ad hoc committee. And you guys all received a PowerPoint from Councilmember Medina. And so following the strategic initiatives discussion, I believe the mayor will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Medina who will then give that presentation. I said this already, quarterly updates, I know the city council knows this, but as a reminder, we will be providing four quarterly updates for each quarter of the fiscal year. At this point, we are roughly, or a little bit over halfway through the first quarter. And then the second quarter begins in October, so on and so forth. Wanted to begin, again, I know the city council knows this, but for members of the public that may be watching, priority focus areas and strategic initiatives, just a little ground setting. Priority focus areas are areas that the city council adopts during the annual budget process for both operating and capital. They do change over time and they are intended to be fluid in nature, but reflect the city council's primary areas that they would like concentration on. Strategic initiatives underpin the priority focus areas. They are, this is an important note, typically in addition to the regular work effort for city operations and capital improvement projects. And the city council furthered that this year because we took out all of the capital improvement projects and initiatives that were related to the regular workload of staff and council really wanted all the strategic initiatives to focus, really underpin those focus areas, but be those high level important initiatives for the organization. Priority focus areas are here, implement the transit corridors vision and revitalize downtown and our all important commercial corridor. Assure rehabilitation and replacement of critical infrastructure and facilities. Grow city revenues to assure ongoing fiscal sustainability and economic vitality. Continue to strengthen community connections, engagement and communication. Protect and improve community aesthetics and safety and continue proactive planning for the future of our great city. It's important to note that these are not in priority order, but they are the priority areas of focus. So your strategic initiatives for fiscal year 21, 22, there are 42 individual initiatives. At this point, we have completed three in just a short amount of time. Most of those are, I believe all of those were sort of things that were in progress, but not yet done at the end of the last fiscal year. 19 are active projects, 12 are anticipated to start later this fiscal year. And eight are unlikely to start this fiscal year and council will remember that some of the conversations we had around the strategic initiatives is that it was very appropriately setting a high bar, but a bar that I think we all recognize that the city does not have the bandwidth and the resources to begin all of them and a number of them are unfunded. So at a high level, I have a few slides that will go over the completed strategic initiatives and then I'd like to walk through that matrix that you have one by one and give just a brief highlight. But the three completed strategic initiatives was our traffic calming measures and speed bump repaving, we'll talk more about that. It was really taking a holistic look at how that process works. Execution of our cost allocation plan and user fees, those take effect in just a few days in September 1. That was a really big project and personnel board transition. Of those 19 that are ongoing, they're listed here, are active, installation of downtown parking meters. The Channel 1 upgrades, a funded project, citywide parking programs, Crestmore wildfire mitigation. A citywide wildfire mitigation, Clean San Bruno, Bay Hill specific plan, downtown parking strategies. Implement online permitting, communications plan, council policies and procedures manual. District elections, trash receptacles, Centennial Park, community fiber upgrade, grant writing, shared services, cannabis regulations, short-term rental and stormwater. Of those that are anticipated to start later in this fiscal year, installation of the downtown parking meters. Actually, that was an active project that must be a holdover. The Channel, Channel, Channel 1 upgrade, citywide parking programs, why is this? I'm sorry, that I didn't, okay. Anticipated to start later this fiscal year. Newspaper racks, water rate study, sewer rate study, the east-west street sweeping alignment. Adoption of an affordable housing fund implementation plan. Looking at affordable housing projects throughout the city in partnership with the development community. Installation of temporary loading zones, economic development program. Climate action plan, heart committee, TSPC review and charter city with a focus on the real estate transfer tax. The initiatives unlikely to start this year is our downtown greening and landscaping plan, weight finding signage. The summer and Saturday, street closures potentially for downtown. Small business attraction program, culture and arts committee review, citywide metrics, posy park improvement and adopt a drain. I know Councilmember Medina will get up and provide the presentation and there'll be a council discussion about a potential downtown ad hoc committee. As we were going through the strategic initiatives and looking at them, it was clear that a number of them actually relate to downtown. 20 of the 42 are actually related to downtown either directly or indirectly. So I wanted to call those out. It's installation of parking meters, weight finding signage, the short-term parking strategies for downtown, the temporary loading zones, trash receptacles, newspaper racks, the downtown greening and landscaping plan, Posy Park, Centennial Park, cannabis regulations. I know a number of council members have talked about potentially having cannabis retailers in the downtown. Certainly the street closures downtown, the east-west sweeping issue while not solely related to downtown, certainly downtown is on the east side. Citywide parking programs certainly effective in the downtown area. Cleaning San Bruno, again indirectly related. Affordable housing, we've talked about having housing in the transit quarters plan downtown. And same thing with the partnerships with developers. Certainly economic development and that new position that the city council approved related to downtown. Small business attraction related to downtown. District elections I put there because should the city council proceed with districts, there will certainly be a district that encompasses downtown. So potentially a greater focus there. And then culture and arts committee review. We talked a lot about having more culture and arts and murals and things downtown. So again, I just wanted to highlight for council that a number of your initiatives nearly half are on some way related to downtown. So that concludes the PowerPoint presentation. I do want to sit down and pull up the matrix that we provided to you. But council can see the matrix. This is in order, not as, as I presented in the PowerPoint, active, likely to start, unlikely to start. This is in order of your priority areas of focus. And so just wanna, wanna highlight a few of them that I know council has been interested in. Installation of parking meters, this project is linked with weight finding signage funded at $225,000. It's important to note that that is seed funding. As we investigate parking meters, the installation and cost to operate them may, or cost to implement them may increase. There are various models that we're looking into. There's the purchase model, there's the lease model, there's the lease to purchase model. It has varying implementation costs, but that analysis is underway. With regard to weight finding signage, this is on hold pending personnel and consultant resources, but also important aligning to initiative 1.1 for consistent parking signage throughout the downtown. So as we put together our parking plan for both on-street and off-street, having the weight finding signage linked to that in a complimentary way. Downtown trash receptacles, council has talked a lot about this and wanted to just highlight that that is an active project. The standard receptacles have been ordered, they're expected to be delivered in September. Staff will intend and would like to do the, and install by city staff. And so when they arrive, we will do an assessment of that and begin to roll out implementation. The newspaper rack project was initiated, but has been temporarily put on hold. And we do intend to reactivate that in QT. That is strictly a staffing resource issue with not having enough personnel to move all these projects forward. And you'll see the downtown greening plan, a high important interest of council. Just highlighting that in a few weeks, we will be at the citizens revenue oversight committee for a re-articulation of that funding request from Measure G as requested by the city council. Posy Park, the council is aware that we have applied for a measure K grant, but there's an unfunded portion there. Centennial Park improvements, a very important project in our downtown. We have hired a landscape architect, they are currently designing a park. We have expanded the boundaries of the improvements to include the walkway that's adjacent. So we don't make a beautiful plaza, but leave a unimproved walkway. And so when those designs come in, there is a plan to provide those both to the Park and Rec Commission and to the city council with construction starting in early November. 60 days to completion, which means that we at this point are targeting completion by January 2022. And so no longer able to have those done in time for the holiday season this year. But very much still moving forward with that project. Traffic calming, this was a completed one. I'll just note that here for this item, there were revisions to the traffic calming toolkit that went to the TSPC committee in September of 2020. And additional work related to this topic will really occur with regard to strategic initiative 26.5, which the city council wanted to undertake as a part of strong governance, a review of the TSPC committee. Also important to note that there was a recent committee meeting where five zones or five areas in the city went through an analysis for traffic calming measures. One was approved. The other four zones did not meet the thresholds, but important to know that the process is working. Adopt a drain is on hold pending staff resources. We are on track, as we mentioned before, to release the grant for grant writing assistance. With regard to comprehensive fiscal sustainability, the city council, I know is aware of all of the work that we've done with regard to fiscal sustainability. The items that are listed here are simply those high level items that we will be working on in this fiscal year. The council has directed that we look at a city charter focused on the commercial transfer tax. This is anticipated to begin later this fiscal year. There have been a number of internal staff meetings on this already. The effort is currently unfunded. However, depending on the direction, we may be able to do that with existing staff resources. However, there will be questions that we will pose to the city council such as, do we want to undertake a likely voter poll? That will have to be funded, but it could very well inform the tax structure that we put, that the council may decide to put on the ballot. Short-term rentals, the city council, and so with regard to, I'm sorry, the charter, we will be scheduling a study session with the city council either late in Q1 or early in Q2 to talk about those decisional items that need to be made in advance of major work beginning on this project. With regard to short-term rentals, we are in discussions with HDL. You'll know HDL's are sales tax and property tax consultant and the company that we recently hired for administration of our business license tax. They also do short-term rental implementation, so we are engaged in discussions with them to take on a third-party administration of the city's short-term rental transient occupancy tax. Cannabis regulations, this is an active project, it is budgeted for $40,000. Staff is evaluating a zoning ordinance amendment change that could begin later this fiscal year. It will require one meeting of the planning commission and three meetings of the city council. There are a whole host of decisions that are needed by the city council. How many dispensaries should the city allow and which zoning districts should those dispensaries be allowed? Should we conduct a poll of business owners and property owners in those specific zoning districts prior to any decisions? And what public outreach, additional public outreach efforts should we undertake? A lot of important threshold questions and we will be scheduling a study session in Q2 to bring those items before council and have that robust discussion. Stormwater, we've talked about, but again, that decision on the next steps is set for October. Cost allocation plan done. Water rate study and sewer rate study, I won't spend much time on, anticipated to begin later, but should we do this effort, which staff agrees that we should. We need to realign existing personnel, resources and ordering on consultant support to get this work done. Channel 1 upgrades, a funded project that is moving forward, I won't say more about that. The idea of having summer and Saturday, street closures in downtown is on hold pending identification of existing staff resources to manage and oversee downtown events. We do not have the capacity or the personnel to implement this at this time. And the effort is unfunded and so that, that project is on hold. The east-west street sweeping alignment anticipated to start in Q3. Certainly a high level and important effort. It's unfunded. I think it's important to note there that until the analysis is done, and we intend to do the analysis in-house, we will not know the full complement of costs to undertake that effort. Certainly it will increase our enforcement efforts and our street sweeping program that will come at a cost. There may be some offset from, in the initial years from revenue from citations, but we know that patterns change once citations are given and so keeping up those enforcement habits will be important. Citywide parking programs, this is being led by the police department. There's a effort underway to begin investigating strategies to enhance parking enforcement across the city and in our, especially in our commercial districts. This will be linked to initiative 1.1, which is the downtown parking meter program because the enforcement of both on-street and off-street parking in the commercial areas. And how we staff to do that really relates to how we increase parking enforcement citywide. Wildfire risk mitigation in Crestmore Canyon, I know council is well aware of this project. I believe that the California Conservation Corps will resume their spikes to do wildfire mitigation in the next few months. In addition, there's that larger project to do mitigation throughout the canyon proper. Right now, we are sending, centering on that 100-foot dispensable space clearing from all the structures at the top of the canyon. But as a part of that $3 million, $3-plus million project, there is wildfire mitigation and also a plan to bring water to the existing service road that is in the canyon. So should there be a wildfire there, we will have a very easy water access. And so that, all of that requires a CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act work. And so we have retained a consultant and we'll begin working on that. The citywide wildfire mitigation project, well underway. What's actually not here is the work that staff undertook last fiscal year and this fiscal year and working with Caltrans for the wildfire mitigation work that's currently occurring in two phases. One phase concluded a few months ago, another phase is active now. And they're clearing eucalyptus trees along the 280 off-ramp near the canyon by San Bruno Avenue. In addition, this project includes funding for a new inspector position that we are recruiting for and wildfire mitigation across various city-owned properties that will, is funded at $150,000 a year, but will, will, will need to increase. Our initial focus area is Crystal Springs Road. It's important to note that the brush in trees are, have encroached on the roadway. Currently, the fire trucks have to drive down close to the center lane due to the encroachment. And so not just the fire risk, but the public safety risk has elevated a clearing project for Crystal Springs Road to the top. Cleaning San Bruno, won't spend a ton of time on this, but the council, because the council recently received an update on where we are with Recology and their pilot program for the abandoned waste program that we launched. There are additional efforts related to this effort such as the initiative 16, street sweeping, downtown cleaning that may be related to the parking program. One of the things that we have talked about internally is should we move forward with parking meters down in downtown, once we have a revenue projection? Will that revenue sustain increased cleaning downtown or potentially a downtown ambassadors program? And so that can be linked with this initiative as well. And also, of course, the trash receptacle project initiative 3.1 is linked to this initiative as well. Affordable housing, 16 and 17, both are anticipated to begin later this fiscal year. I think the biggest note about affordable housing is really actually number 19. And should the city council approve the Bay Hill specific plan and the U2 Phase 1 project? There is approximately $25 million that will be paid over the life of that development agreement to our city's Affordable Housing Fund, which will give us the resources that we very much need to, to build or incentivize affordable housing. And there is a payment that should the plan be approved and U2 follows through on their development where we would receive approximately $9 million in 2022. And so all of these efforts, sort of 17, 18 and 19, interrelate because to really have a city project, we need more than the balance that we have on our current fund, which is $3 million. Attractit, this project is moving forward. We are looking at evaluating several vendors, but we have a goal of implementing in Q2. There has been a delay. We are actually shifting from Attractit to a new vendor due to technical difficulties and integration. But we are looking to initiate the launch of that in Q2. Economic Development Program, 20 and 21.1. There's a new position that was funded in the budget. We are recruiting for that position. I think actually we're beginning the recruitment plan for that position. It will go out on the street later in Q1. And the small business attraction program will really be linked to that economic development officer, economic development manager position. And so when that position comes on board, if we can actually fill that position sooner than later, this initiative may move from a two to a three. Climate action plan, we did receive a $10,000 grant from PCE specific to reach those. Initial work has begun on this, however, it is on, on hold pending additional resources, staffing and consultant as well as financial resources. Staff did begin conversations with faculty at Skyline College for research and fellowship assistance. And those conversations will be reactivated now that that personnel at Skyline is, will be back on campus. Communications plan on track to provide that to council by the end of Q1. Council policies and procedures, looking to finalize that in September. We, pending calendaring of a final study session or two and final action by the city council at our regular meeting. We did run into a delay on that, but we are reactivating that. Personnel board transition is complete. District elections, so we have launched that project internally and we are planning a study session for the city council on September 28. All of that work needs to be done by April 2021 and so we're, we're working on the schedule. And there are a number of decisions that will be placed before the city council at that September 28 meeting. Heart committee, we anticipate beginning that in Q2. TSPC awaiting the hiring of a permanent public works director who will take on this initiative. Anticipated to start in Q3 or Q4. And cultural arts committee review, unlikely to start this fiscal year, pending identification, staff resources. We have the, what I think is the best person on staff to lead this. Their plate is currently full. But if we can offload some work there, we may be able to start. That has larger decisional staffing decisions that are before staff and the city council. And then citywide metrics, an important project, but on hold pending identification of staff or consultant resources. I did mention to the city council that we do not have the bandwidth to complete this project in large measure this year. We did begin by providing a report on the police department that provided a number of metrics. But a full comprehensive citywide performance venture project is not within our current bandwidth to provide this year. However, we will look at potentially bringing on a consultant to do that work, but that will come at a cost. And more on that as we proceed through the quarterly updates. And again, this was intended to be just a high level update. I noticed a number of our department heads are here and happy to answer any questions that the city council has. But again, we will be providing quarterly updates and more detailed updates in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, city manager, for the detailed report. I just have a couple of questions, high level, not getting down in the weeds. Regarding the wave finding signage, I'm, why is the, that entire program contingent on the parking meter program? Could we, could we adopt, sorry, hang on. No, why, my phone is ringing, my computer is running, sorry about that. Could we adopt the design standard and develop signs to direct visitors, visitors toward our downtown from other areas of the city? And then within downtown, point people to city lots? And then use that same design standard later to add more signs related to parking meters?
City manager?
Sure. Is that possible to do? Absolutely. Do we have the staff resources to do that right now? No. No. We do have a contract traffic engineer that we can apply to that work. One of the challenges with that is just cost. That contract engineer actually costs more than a city staffer would cost. And so, we're looking to bring a permanent traffic engineer onboard and have had a number of ongoing recruitment efforts there. One, the reason why staff is recommending linking it to the parking meter project is to understand where we're going with on-street and off-street parking and have a signage program that may actually drive people to the lots, right? And have words on those signs that will let people know that, for example, off-street parking is lower than on-street parking. So, say, Marty, park in this parking lot, where that parking lot down, on that end, is a two or five hours' walk. And so, to have a sort of very aesthetically pleasing, thoughtful approach to manage parking downtown, linking to a financial strategy with regard to how you price on-street and off-street parking meters. Is there the possibility, there are standard parking signs that are sort of white with green lettering saying parking over there, right? Can we implement those? That is possible. It would take some staff work to identify where those go, but the recommendation was to do a holistic approach that is linked with a comprehensive parking plan for downtown.
Okay, and that makes sense, and I'm not advocating, you know, getting generic signs or anything like that. I think what you described makes a lot of sense, so thank you. And then my other question, under the Clean San Bruno topic, you mentioned that it said in the matrix there that public education and information was underway. Are these, but by underway, do you mean that those communications are still being developed, or has any of those communications gone out?
There have been communications around SP response, and that is how we're communicating to the public around illegal nothing. You see something reported to SP response. And so, we have done communications around that, both in social media, newsletters and print, and we will continue to do that to increase awareness and use of SP response.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure, because I wasn't sure if I had seen any of them, but you know, with the way social media works, you don't always get to see everything. You know, I know that I would be willing, and some, if not all, of my colleagues would probably be willing to amplify those communications when they go out. So, if there's a way to keep us in the loop when those things go out, so we can look for them and amplify them, I'm sure we'd be happy to do that, and I know I would be. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Manager Grogan, for this update. Clearly, there's, we don't have enough time to get into it, and I understand it's just to give us an update. I just had a couple of quick questions. On the Centennial Plaza $150,000 budget, does that budget still include, or does it include the design and construction costs?
It does include the design and construction costs. It is our intention to do the project with the budget that is provided. Caveat. Since that time, I've had a number of communications from members of the city council and others saying, can we add this, can we add this, can we do that? And so, one of the things that we're doing is developing a design that will meet that target and want to bring that to the Parking Rec Commission, want to bring that to the city council. But I know that there's a lot of desires on sort of what that plaza looks like. The honest answer is $120,000 doesn't get a lot of the articulations that we've heard, and so, we're working within that budget absolutely. And we increased that budget the last time we were before the city council, because there were additional desires, and so, we intend to live within that budget.
Okay. Where in the recruitment process are we with the Economic Development Director?
So, a recruitment plan has been developed. A number of those positions, including that one, was not funded for the full year. There was a recognition that, I believe, we did a four-month recruitment cycle for a number of those positions, and so, we're developing the recruitment plan for the Economic Development Manager, and the plan for that is to launch in this quarter, which will be between now and the end of September.
Okay. Councilman Hamilton asked a question on the wave-finding signage, so I see that. And perhaps at a later time, if not tonight, what we can get into, when we get the update, the official update, then we can have opportunities to ask additional questions. We don't have time tonight, and we just received this spreadsheet, you know, today, so there is no way to be prepared to get into it. I, with that said, clearly, there's too much to do. And when we left this process, it was my intent or request that we would prioritize, and I believe we still need to do that. And so, perhaps when we do have the official update, that we'll be able to do that better. So, I'll leave my comments for now.
Councilmember Mason.
So, I think given that, one area that wasn't mentioned around the importance of our downtown was that in the San Bruno Community Foundation's recent survey, it was by far considered the number-one area that residents are concerned and excited about altogether. So, I think what would help me to really understand where the city is prioritizing as far as operations go, is we have a number of departments, and it seems like various departments might be able to focus on these different areas. So, you know, Public Works is around the cleanliness, the police, code enforcement, community development around the greening, to identify a priority area for each department, and then identify timelines for actual execution. Because my concern is that the conversation around the overwhelming numbers that we're seeing tonight, I don't think should be enough to not have a timeline for really anything, right? Because some of these, I think, low-hanging fruit can be done, as you're working on the trash receptacles, you're working on the, there was one other area that I had just written down a minute ago, but I don't know that those two areas for the amount of time that are being placed on the presentations and the conversations, I think, from all council members with our city manager, you know, shouldn't or couldn't be substituted with even picking one and saying, let's see what we can, if we can accomplish this in two or three months by having everybody work as a strategic initiative within the departments on this area. And I do understand that departments have to work together, you know, not anything is one, but maybe having each department champion one area. Because I just get concerned that the overwhelmingness is going to be used to kind of offset the responsibility that we all have to our community to improve our downtown.
Anything else, Councilmember?
No, I would like a response, though, from the city manager. I think the question is, would it be possible for the departments to kind of take an initiative on their own? They get to pick the initiative based on, you know, their, whatever they have on their plates and champion it. I just like to see some movement, given the amount of attention that our downtown has right now.
City Manager, are you prepared or have any comments?
Sure. So, I think there's a lot there, but if we unpack it, what I would say is, your departments are absolutely championing initiatives and working on them. And I think the progress that we saw from, at least I can speak on, the 2019 and 2020 completed initiatives is that things are getting done. It is absolutely true that there are 42 initiatives, and the city council did prioritize them in a bold, sort of your one, two, and three priority. What's also true is that the various projects move at different schedules and a different cadence, because they're all unique, and one person in one department will be working on this. This project will be a cross-apartment project. There, some are complex, some are not, some are not complex. So, I think it's fair to say that when the city council adopted these strategic initiatives, one of the conversations we had was, one, let's pull off a number of projects that staff are working on, because we want this list to focus on an articulation of the strategic initiatives that council is most focused on. What's also true about that, and that is a very appropriate decision, what's also true about that is all those other projects we took off didn't go away, right? And your organization are working on those projects, plus their own departmental initiatives, and plus doing their day-to-day job. And so, there's a truth in that there is only so much bandwidth to go around, right? And it's totally appropriate to set the bar high, but when you set the bar as high as we've set it, I think you have to recognize that everything will not be worked on simultaneously. Some things will be done sooner than others, and that is, one of the focuses of having this discussion, is I wanted to be extremely transparent with the city council before our first quarterly update on an assessment of where we are, what we can begin, what we're planning to begin later, and what I don't think in the organization cannot accomplish with the resources and capacity constraints we have now. And that's the point of the matrix you received, that's the point of this conversation. This is not to be a detailed, here's a timeline for this project, and here's where we are, all that can come later. This is sort of post-adoption. Here's an assessment of what we're working on, what we are planning to begin later, and what is outside of the bandwidth. And with regard to focus, I welcome another discussion like we had COVID, two years ago now, at Skyline College, where we had all of the department heads with the city council in a very open and candid conversation about the work that is on the department's work program, right? I think that discussion will elevate some of the, I would say, real frustrations that council and the community has, because the truth of the matter is there's a lot to be done in San Bruno, and there's a lot of improvements that we as a community want. I want, as a city manager for the community and for the organization, you want as electors, our staff wants. There's, the reality is there's only so much bandwidth. And so, while we have a list, and we're working on stuff, inevitably, things aren't being done. And so, I think the best thing we can do to address the concerns that Councilmember Mason mentioned, is to plan that in-person retreat conversations where council can receive that detailed articulation from the department heads on sort of, what are their departmental initiatives? As a leader in their department, where are they spending their time to improve just the basic nuts and bolts, right? Where are they, where are they spending their time on initiatives? Both citywide initiatives and the city council strategic initiatives? And I think that'll elevate and provide that detailed understanding that, frankly, a conversation we haven't been able to have for the last two years.
Yeah, and I think I enjoyed that meeting when we had it, and I would also like to hear what initiatives our leadership team have that they are enjoying. Because, you know, it is overwhelming. You know, we hear very often about capacity, and we, I think we all understand that we're at capacity, we have a lean staff. That's why the council overwhelmingly approved a number of positions this year, to not just get what has been outstanding done, but also to get the initiatives that we narrowed down to eight, if I remember correctly, done. And so, I'd really like to hear from the directors, and I'd love to hear what they're enjoying doing about their, you know, with their, with the initiatives that they have. Is it just a feeling of we're getting work, or is there any joy that's coming out of the work that's being done that is reflected in the city? I think it's important that we hear that from our directors as well. Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Vice Mayor?
I apologize for not bringing it up earlier. Where are we in the status of the Measure K funding for Posey Park?
I think that's best answered by Councilmember Mason, who has been having conversations with Supervisor Paul.
Yeah, so he received the letter, we're just actually waiting on a response.
Is there a due date, or is it kind of an open thing there?
It's open. It's open, I can follow up, I have to reach out about something else, so I can follow up.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from my colleagues in regards to the strategic initiative update, which obviously was just a kind of a pre-update to the update? Okay, not seeing any.
Just one quick comment. I, the city manager mentioned about having a, you know, trying to make you schedule a, an in-person retreat to go through this with the department heads. I love that idea. Obviously, it wasn't here two years ago when the last one happened. That sounds great, and I would really like to participate in that, and whatever we can do to get to make that happen sooner rather than later, I would be in favor. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands up, and City Manager, if you're concluded at this point, we'll move on to the discussion of potential downtown ad hoc committee. Just making sure we watch the clock. City Manager, is there anything that you want to begin with before I ask the Vice Mayor?
No, I believe the Vice Mayor has PowerPoint. He did provide a copy here, so Marty, if you have a challenge, screen sharing, I have it up here.
And so, the Vice Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to the Vice Mayor for, as you know, he had brought up this topic prior, and so, that's why we're here this evening, and he has some information for the more detailed thought process behind what he was discussing earlier.
Give me around 30 seconds to see if I can pull this.
I can keep talking.
All right, so I'm going to try to get my presentation up. And it's almost there. And I'm ready to go. If I can be screen sharing capability, I think I'm good to go.
Yes, Vice Mayor Medina, you should have capability, all panelists do.
Okay, I'm looking to share my screen, I don't see the button on the left.
There should be a green button at the bottom of your screen that says Share Screen, that enables you to then choose your presentation.
Unfortunately, I don't see that, so perhaps we can just go ahead and go with staff's copy. It's close enough. Perfect. Okay, well, I first wanted to thank my colleagues for allowing this to get this far. As you all know, our community has been interested in improving our downtown for many years. So, next slide, please. So, here is the presentation, we're going to go have a background, some good news, why we have, why have a downtown improvement committee, who's on it, and what we're going to do. Next slide. As we know, our downtown has been in its current state for a long time. We also know that our residents We also know that our residents have been asking for improvements. Plans have been approved, but unfortunately, funds are not available. The parking structure, as identified in the downtown parking management plan, is eighteen million and two thousand nineteen dollars, right? So with inflation, streetscape improvements are nineteen million. You've also seen that, you know, trees and pots don't do well for, for extended periods of time. So our downtown looks the way it is because it's just, it's, it's an old downtown. Next slide, please. So the good news, as we saw tonight, twenty of the forty-two strategic initiatives are, are related to our downtown. This council wants to get something done. The San Bruno Community Foundation, as councilwoman Mason pointed out, in their poll, our residents, I think this is the, the second highest need from our residents, if they want to see. And what have we done? We have the strategic initiatives, and I'm gonna go through a couple of them here because these are the highlights. Hiring an economic development manager. We, we have a hundred fifty thousand to create an accessible centennial plaza. We're looking at the funding for three hundred thousand to green and landscape our downtown. What else have we done? We've established loading and loading zones, green parking zones to, to help turn over the customers that are coming downtown. Councilwoman Mason's working on a two hundred thousand dollar grant for Posey Park. The council's behind that. We've authorized new garbage cans, news, and news racks. And probably almost as important, our community is engaged in, in wanting to improve our downtown. They're, they're there for cleanups. And, and they, they've taken upon themselves. I, I challenge anyone to say that those pots, they have never looked better ever since they've been installed downtown. So that's the good news. Next slide, please. So with all this focus on, on downtown, well, why set up a committee? Well, as we see clearly, our staff is too busy to do anything more than what they're already doing. So what can the council do by putting together a downtown improvement committee? Well, what we do immediately is, is, is that we, we're gonna improve the communication with our community, business community, with, with the business owners, property owners, with our residents. We're gonna build relationships. And, and, and in these relationships, you start developing trust that we, we are there for our downtown. And I know we're gonna get a question, I'll get a question, but about, well, what about the rest of our, our city? We're gonna get there too, but we gotta start somewhere. And I think it's time for us to start with the downtown improvement committee. We'll also obtain input via surveys and community meetings to deal with the parking issues, to talk about the street closures, to, what events can we do downtown? How do we assist businesses with these grant applications? I am very proud of the work that all of the council members have done in reaching out to all the businesses in San Bruno. But yet not everyone has applied, and we need to be able to, again, they need a little bit more handholding. And it's a little hard to do that socially distant, but it, it takes additional effort. And I, and I believe that we can do it. There are two business owners that I've been trying to get to, to apply, and it's like, okay, tell you what, I'll sit down with you. And we'll, we'll, we'll apply together, because they haven't got any funding yet. So as well as we can promote businesses, what else can we do? I don't think San Bruno has a visitor's guide. We don't have a presence on our, our downtown on social media. I believe the chamber has some things, but in my opinion, the chamber needs our help too. There's only a few businesses, around five percent of them, that are in our downtown that are in the Chamber of Commerce. I confirmed there's at least twenty-five vacancies downtown. So how could we help our community? Do a little bit more. And of course, as we come back, this, this subcommittee, or committee, however we want to call it, however we want to vote for it, they will come back to council with recommendations for action. Next slide, please. So who's on it? Well, like, just like the Clean San Bruno Committee, we need two, two council members. I, I really wanna be on this, so we need one more if, if we're gonna do it. This takes a lot of time, and unfortunately, I have the time. I have a number of connections downtown, and we need one more. Next slide, please. So what can we do as, 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 who, who, this is the first phase. And, and what would this committee at some point enlarge into or to grow into with more, more involvement? With the, with the full council, with the city manager and city departments, with the chamber, the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center, the property owners, business owners? And I'm putting the, the next one separate because in the city of Burlingame, in their Economic Development Committee, they, they meet once, once a year with the hotel operators to figure out how they can help them help the businesses downtown with, with those guides that you get in a hotel, right? When you go there, what, what's to do in San Bruno? They also meet with the car dealerships, and we could expand to, it's not just the downtown, but what are, are other shopping centers? That's Tan Brandon, that's Town Center, that's Bay Hill, and the businesses on El Camino. And of course, probably our most important partners are our community. Without, without the consumer, it goes nowhere. Next slide, please. There's an example of an amazing effort from, from a, a community member. That's one of our pots. Never looked better. Open to questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor, for the PowerPoint and your comments. I'm going to first see if there's any members of the public that would like to have any comments on this. This would be the opportunity to raise your hand. Now I'm gonna move back to the council for questions to the vice mayor on, on, on the PowerPoint and his comments. All right, seeing no hands, we'll bring it back to council, and any questions to the vice mayor?
Somebody's hand just went up, Mayor Medina. Not sure her own.
Is there any immediate questions? I'm gonna give an opportunity for the public to raise hands. Any member of the council have any questions?
The chair?
Councilmember Salazar.
So, first of all, I wanna, I wanna commend the vice mayor for bringing this forward. I know that after years of, of trying to get efforts started downtown and always sort of coming up short, I, I think this is an innovative approach, definitely something different. I don't think we've ever tried forming a, a committee. I, I know that we've tried some efforts to form merchants association years ago, and it didn't go so well, but, you know, that, that's really not a good reason to never try again. So my, given what we heard previously regarding workloads and, and number of initiatives going on, it does seem like this effort would require some involvement from staff. And so I kinda wanted to hear from the city manager regarding his thoughts on how, how sorry about that, how city staff would participate and what amount of effort it would take to make this successful.
City manager.
Sure. In response to council member Salazar's question, receiving, receiving PowerPoint today, receiving sort of the full complement of the articulation with council right now as well, so I'm, I don't know that I have the most articulated answer, but I, why don't I make a, two overarching thoughts? I think the, in large measure, the concept that the vice mayor is articulating on some level sounds like a robust Chamber of Commerce with maybe greater membership, or that merchants association. And so do we wanna create a seat on the, or, or talk, work with the chamber on having a seat on the chamber for a member of the city council? And because a lot of the sort of strategies there to work with businesses and improve assistance and collaboration, I think relates to the work that the chamber does. With, with regard to staff's ability to support the effort, what I would say is right now, sort of as we sit today, outside of sort of carving out a portion of my time as a city manager, I don't know that we have a staff member that we can assign to that effort. We are hiring a economic development manager, so, so we could potentially look at that. But the full complement of what that person is can, will be working on, we'd have to sort of look at that, at that workload. I do think that there is a overall desire, not just from council member Medina, but members of council, to engage with our merchants in downtown. What I, as I look at our existing work plan over the next six months, there's a lot of things that, that are gonna require a lot of engagement. One of it, one of them is cannabis. You know, does the council wanna have a subcommittee that meets with businesses downtown around cannabis? Is that a, and, and the, the sort of zoning conversations and how many businesses we, we have downtown? Sort of, is it centered on council policy, or is it centered on other things that are maybe more aligned to a chamber or merchants association? And so that's where I'm trying to understand this, this sort of demarcation. Because if it's centered on council policy, that can be an ad hoc committee, or that could be a limited duration outreach effort. If it's centered on other items, those items are typically more focused on a chamber or merchants association. And so sort of what is the sort of core focus of, 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 of the effort and, and the end goal? Because if it's to report to the city council for potential actions, I think a lot of the, the items there don't, don't necessarily align to that. So my recommendation would be to make it very focused and/or think about structuring it as a partnership with other organizations that are focused on the business community and merchant community. And then I guess the last thought was also that should the city council go to district elections, you will have a district council member in that area to focus. And so how would that be if it's, that could be the focus of that district council member to meet with, with the merchants in downtown and do those sorts of activities? If you decide to have a committee, maybe it's the district council member and the mayor, because that's the sort of overarching. You have, you have that district council member and the mayor that serves the entire city, so are those two, two people on the committee? Just some overarching thoughts as I sort of receive this with council.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton, I'm going to call first, we have a member of the public, Nancy Foreman, and I see the only hand up at this time. So if I can, switch back to Ms. Foreman, I hear from her, and then we'll bring it back to council. Thank you, Mr. Foreman. City clerk, if you can bring in Nancy. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Thanks for taking my call. I was trying to raise my hand, and it was flipping in and out. To what council member Medina is saying, and from having been downtown in the last eight months, talking to a lot of merchants, talking to community people, I'm really passionate about having our merchants be heard. They're tired of hearing a runaround. We keep hearing you're gonna do something. I hear that council member Medina is offering to reach out and let these merchants know that they're being heard. We desperately need to come up with a win-win situation, and our merchants feel like they're being paid attention to. There's so many simple five-minute projects that can be done downtown that just show volumes of care. Our merchants are fed up, and I really feel like over the last eight months, I've gained a lot of trust with them. They thank me. They say downtown's never looked so good. What is the city doing? We don't see anything. And I'm not a councilperson, so I don't have to be real polite. My voice is cracking because I'm passionate about it. And please, let's do something for our merchants so that we know that San Bruno cares. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and now we'll move to council member Hamilton, please.
So I wanted to, this, this kind of follows on from council member Salazar's question and the city manager's answer to it regarding staff time and availability. I would, what I would, what I took away from the, from what we, what we heard from the vice mayor, and please, Marty, correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken, is that the, the focus of this would be to, to do what we can as council members on this committee without involving staff, you know, as much as possible. And if there were things that would eventually need to involve staff, that's what we talked about on that, that last bullet about providing recommendations to council for action. Because, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be directing staff to do anything directly from this committee. It would have to come from the full council. So as far as going through and doing these individual items that the vice mayor laid out, I was envisioning that this would be, that this, that these would be things that would be done specifically by the members of the committee and not asking staff to do any of them. Because we, because as, as we all know, staff, staff doesn't have capacity to do one more thing. So it, it, it's, it's, it's to be a, it's to extend our reach and, and pitch in and help not to add another burden. Marty, if I'm, if I misinterpreted that, let me, please, please correct me.
No, you're, you're, you're exactly on point, Councilman Hamilton. At some point, of course, to be fully effective, you would need staff support, but that is not what I'm asking for right now. There's plenty to do with building a relationship with our downtown community. They don't know who we are. I mean, even still today, you could walk into a store and you run into somebody, and you're like, yeah, yeah, okay, I'm so-and-so, like, oh, okay. They know you, like, that's okay, you know? Don't wear my badge around town.
I think it would be important, my, my other point that I wanted to make, I think it would be important that it also is not just a guerrilla effort that's being done without any communication. I think, I think it would be important to keep, to keep staff through, through communicating directly through the city manager's office of what this committee is doing, just so that we don't step on, step on toes or, or, you know, cause any conflicts or whatever, just, you know, full transparency about what's happening. But as far as the actual boots-on-the-ground effort, it would be from the council members.
The intent, Councilman Hamilton, the intent would be almost exactly how you and I worked together on the Clean San Bruno Committee. We would have Zoom meetings until we could meet. We would have Zoom meetings until we could meet safely, really safely in person. Those meetings will be recorded, available to our staff. We have bi-weekly updates with our city manager and be happy to share everything that we're working on, open to suggestions. This is going to be a truly transparent process. There are five businesses that identify that are in the Chamber currently downtown. That's, that's in the, in the less than 5%. So we can assist our Chamber. As we all know, there's been a number of changes in the Chamber and they were making great progress and then got hit by COVID, just like everybody else. And all those efforts went away and now we have somebody new. So, yeah, this won't take much staff time. Very, very, very little, other than giving an update. And when any time is needed, then I understand the process. We come back, we report back out to the council and ask for action. But this is primarily at this point is obtaining the input and building those relationships. Getting those grant applications out again. We gave one, the whole council gave one to everyone, every business owner in San Bruno just about. And yet not everybody applied. And this next round of funding is specifically for those that haven't received that funding. So, yes, thank you for your questions.
Councilman Mason.
Yeah, so I just want to thank Vice Mayor Medina for bringing this to us. Vice Mayor Medina has been a huge champion for downtown, I think for as long as I've known him. I am wondering, I like the idea of an improvement committee. I think my concern is that between the downtown being listed as, you know, top priority with the community foundation, the city identifying it as a, you know, top, one of the top priorities as well through our initiatives. And then, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but I reached out to the San Mateo County Silicon Valley Tours Association who wrote a great article about San Bruno entitled Unique Places to Visit in the Bay Area San Bruno. And it is actually the number one clicked blog that they have right now on their site, followed by the Examiner's August 9th article, Neighborhood Shops Thrive in San Bruno's Eclectic Downtown, How Long Will It Last? So there's definitely attention being placed on our, you know, I think very quaint and beautiful downtown. And trying to figure out how we can enhance what we have is really, I think, the priority right now. So my suggestion would be that in lieu of having kind of this broad committee that brings back recommendations, that I think honestly are going to be largely what are already recommended, to take what's already been advised, like for example, take the streetscape plan and use the committee to gather the merchants and say, within the streetscape plan, which would be your priorities today? I would also say that the committee members selected should be assigned to attend the Chamber meetings. One of our neighboring cities, when I started calling around to find out what chambers are doing there, actually has two council members attend every Chamber meeting. And it was established years ago to make sure that the Chamber is aware that the City Council is there to assist them, to support them, and also have a Chamber that is advocating for their merchants in the ways that most benefit the merchants, right? And I know our Chamber has struggled, but hopefully they'll come out of this. You know, the COVID, like all the other, like everybody else, you know, everybody's struggling right now. So really my two suggestions would be to really narrow this down to saying we have a streetscape plan, sharing it with the merchants. I've had meetings with the merchants and I can honestly say that I think a lot of merchants are not familiar with the streetscape plan. So I think that would be the first part. And then within the streetscape plan, what do the merchants want to see as priorities? And then the second part would be the same committee would be responsible to attending the Chamber of Commerce meetings. And then I would say, let's see how that comes out and then maybe that could be expanded to another project. But I think that way we're really starting to lean in on what are going to be our priorities and, you know, our checklist to start really fixing and seeing a visible improvement in downtown. But thank you for bringing this to us.
Once again, as I started, thank you for your time and effort and we've taken our walks and so I, and watched you water and other things. So the passion is obviously there. So thank you, Marty, Vice Mayor. I know you had mentioned also, there's, I believe, if I heard correctly, like 20 of the 42 initiatives have something to do with downtown in some respect. But what I certainly don't want to do is duplicate and have too many of us going over things. So, you know, some folks may not know that the council has taken some of the streetscapes and said, okay, let's do newspaper wrecks. Let's do trash receptacles. Maybe they don't know about Centennial Plaza. So it's probably an educational aspect that I think is a reach out and let them know. I think Councilmember Mason about the streetscape plan is kind of good to see that. And of course, it takes money. Community benefits will come in at some points and so maybe there's some opportunities. With the Chamber, there's always been a department head that has sat on the Board of Directors. And that occurs and still does today, so that the city is connected closely with the Board. So they have the Board of Directors, which are elected by their peers. And then I don't know if they have general meetings, but I think that's something that has to be worked out. I don't know that we can walk in and impose us putting people there. It's about the collaboration, what works well for that system, if they like that. But I think, you know, communicating is everything, but I think setting expectations are as well. And I think some of the things can be done, that has been proven. And, I mean, there are some things about just the sidewalks. There are some basic things, as Ms. Foreman had said, Mrs. Foreman had said about, you know, that we could probably do or are low-hanging fruit that you can take care of. But I do believe that eventually, you know, staff is going to find themselves in a situation that it's going to be, okay, let's look into this, how can we do this? What's the timeline? Is it, whose property is it on? For example, Caltrain or Caltran? So I just want us to be mindful of that. And so, but once again, I very much, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for putting together that presentation you did. I think that helped too, as we talked earlier, to expound upon where you were seeing this vision. So I thank you for that. Councilman Mason.
Yeah, and I would also add that one of the initiatives we talked about was, and I don't think it was written out the way I had kind of introduced it, but with the idea that we would find out what businesses we want to see in downtown. And then determining, once, you know, once we had an Economic and Development Manager, we would, you know, they would essentially try to attract those businesses and hopefully we would have some funds to put up an incentive. And so that would be another area that I would also suggest, maybe speaking with the merchants or the owners, you know, what's missing down here? One of the big responses I get is there's a lot of restaurants, but there's nothing to do after you eat. There's no, you know, arcades for kids, there's no boutique shops or shops at all outside of, you know, Twice is Nice, Lovely Bump. So I guess what would the merchants want to see that complement their existing business without necessarily being strong competition? And that would be something else that I think would be really helpful to get more information on and knowledge because I don't really know more than, you know, random conversations with store owners. So, thank you.
And thank you for those comments because you just triggered my mind to one thing I forgot I had in my note here, didn't. It's just the, when businesses, you know, when you have a business on, in our community that come in, there aren't a chain or something, sometimes they need that extra assistance, right? There are businesses that go in there and, you know, I don't want to say holding hands in a negative way, but I mean, sometimes you need a little extra assistance about the requirements, about what needs to be done. Here's the list. This will have the best success for both sides. And I think that's important. It may not be for this committee, but, you know, I look to ways, how can we streamline the process? I do hear that folks want to come in, but this isn't allowed downtown. This is not allowed and I'm not, you know, I need to understand that a little bit better. But obviously, we all as colleagues have heard times someone saying, hey, you know, I need more assistance or this is taking long. And of course, that's money. Also, the other side of it is when a business sits vacant for years and years and nothing happens inside of it. And, you know, what can the city do, if anything? Rather than allow it to stay vacant because maybe that, that business owner is saying, I'm okay with just it sitting as a vacant storefront. So I think those are two other matters too. Sorry to go off on that offside of that. But anyway, I'm going to turn it back to the Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for your questions. So in one of those slides, the survey, surveying our businesses on what they, what they would like to see, what our community would like to see, that's one of the things. Picking out items out of the streetscape, that could be one of the things. It's pretty easy to pivot on that. The primary thing though is that we need to get, we need to communicate. When we are proposing a, agreeing a parking zone and we need to be able to make sure that our businesses understand what's going on and making sure that they're involved. And perhaps they're not as involved as they would, as we all would like them to be. They're really, really busy. They're struggling keeping their businesses open. And I think this is, this is the right time to start these conversations. It's not going to take staff much time at all. And let's say in three months, report back what we found out so far with these different surveys, with these different meetings. Our city manager will be updated every other week, probably even more often if he would like. But there are 20, 23 vacancies downtown, right? What can we do to help, help, help get the word out on social media, letting people know, hey, at, hold on a second. At 675, there's a vacancy. It's this many square feet. It's, here's a picture of it. It was previously a restaurant. It's ready to go. And sharing that information with our community, doing more than we're doing now, which isn't too much outside of what our staff is already working on. I'm not trying to duplicate any of that effort. I can't. This is, this is about reaching out to our community and building these relationships with the additional support, knowing that we're on an improvement committee. And we're going to invite everybody, we can invite everybody, figure out if we can, if we need to do it block by block, we could do it like that. Because it's hard when you're, when you own a business and if you come up downtown, you'll see the majority of them need help, right? They need staff. This COVID has wiped out a lot of people that are not interested in returning to these jobs. And the help wanted signs are up there and it's very difficult to get people to kind of want to come back to take those jobs. People figured out they could do something else. So anyhow, I thank you all for your, for your time. I, I'm open to work with anyone. But I think it's really time for us to move forward. And I'm hoping for the support to start this committee and to reach into our community and hit the ground running. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and to be mindful of time. What I think would need to be done too is ad hoc versus just two council members, you know, talks about noticing and talks about the process. So I want to be mindful of that. The city manager articulated that, you know, he again is receiving this. So I want him to have a little time to digest that with you maybe and, you know, come up. I'm going to, unless I'm seeing, unless I'm not reading the colleagues well, that to bring this back up at a regular scheduled council meeting because we have to, we can't appoint committees here. They need to be done, as we know, especially depending on what type of committee it's going to be. So it's established, the process and protocol.
Mr. Mayor, can we get the city attorney? It's, I have a little different understanding. This is a scheduled meeting to discuss appointing members to this committee. That was the whole point.
Guess who appeared?
There he is.
Oh, I'm looking at the agenda. It says discussion of potential downtown ad hoc committee. It doesn't say appoint members to the ad hoc committee. It says there's going to be a discussion about it. I don't know what was intended that this would be, but when I read it, I thought it was a discussion of the potential committee and not whether members were going to be appointed at this time. But I think out of an abundance of caution, I would suggest that if there is agreement or majority or consensus, that it could simply be agendized at the next meeting for appointment of the individuals to be on that committee.
Sure, the Mayor, I might suggest that, you know, while I want to get, get us going on this as soon as possible as well. I think we, not knowing exactly what type of committee it is, that needs to be well-defined before we would vote on it, I believe.
Yeah, I would add that this is the first time that several of us are hearing about this. It would be helpful to make sure that we determine what sort of committee is it going to be? What are the rules associated? Is it ad hoc or otherwise? So I think there's a little bit of vetting that staff would need to do just to make sure that we've got all the details clearly detailed before the committee is appointed and formed.
Is that, okay, so I'm hearing a concurrence of bringing it forward. Give staff the opportunity to do that and make suggestions, or you talk to the Vice Mayor as far as, just so everybody's on the same page of what kind of committee that would be most effective to, right? Because you want to have a lot of latitude, I think, and be able to meet and greet and if you have to start posting things and all that. So I think you want the most efficient way, communicate the best way. So is city attorney, we can do that at the next meeting?
Sure, we will need to figure out what kind of committee it is. Normally committees, even of less than a quorum, that are established by formal action of the City Council are required to comply with the Brown Act, even if they don't include members of the public. So there's just some things we need to discuss and work through and make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Understood. Okay, better to be safe than sorry. I think we've all learned that in our lifetimes. Okay, with that, I want to thank again Vice Mayor and I want to thank everybody for your input and thoughts. We're going to go ahead and adjourn in just a couple of minutes. We'll be going to the next Zoom meeting, which will be 7 o'clock, City Council meeting.